Welcome, everybody. Thank you that you came out. This is, do we have to announce again that this is, we have those retaining by Zoom because of the COVID? And that is, that is a legal, that are a legal thing that we can do now. We'll start off as we normally do with our May prayer request list. We need to remember Scotty Lewis's mother in her prayers, also Cheryl Lawson's husband, and we need to remember the Hembry, Hackett, and Gentry families, that they've all lost loved ones.
Hi, guys.
Hi, Robin.
There she is.
I'm gonna turn my video off just because of the glare, but it should put my picture up if that's okay with y'all.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Is that work? You can hear me?
Yep. We got you. And we also need to remember our graduates and all those that's been affected by COVID-19, and whether it's through sickness or loss of, loss of their jobs, or whatever it may be. Anybody else or anything else we need to add to this list? If not, let's go to the Lord in prayer. To heaven Father, we're so thankful for this day, for the health you've given us in it, for the opportunity you've given us to be out here today and to do the things for this school system that we, that we need to do. We want to pray for all those who are mentioned on this list, for those who have lost loved ones, give them comfort. For those that are sick, we pray that you'll get them back to their much-wanted health. We want to remember especially our many graduates. We, we know they've been through this, many of them through this system for 13 years. We pray that they're prepared, and we pray that you'll be with them and help them to have successful lives. We also want to always remember those now that have been affected by this COVID-19, whether they're sick, lost, lost jobs, it's, however, it's affected many lives, and we just want to pray that it will eventually be, go away, and we know with, with the power you have, that you can put it away, and we pray that you'll do that. Father, we just want to pray now that you'll be with us through this meeting tonight, help us to do the things for the school system that are best for it, and we just pray that you'll be with us every day of our lives. It's these things we pray in Christ's most holy name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Before we start, I will do the official announcement. The Smith County Board of Education has determined that meeting electronically is necessary to protect public health, safety, and welfare in light of the COVID-19 outbreak. This determination will be placed in the minutes of this board meeting conducted electronically. Thank you. All right, let's get started with our meeting. We'll begin with our consent items. Do we have a motion on our consent items?
How about the motion? We approve the consent items. Eight through it.
Mr. Manning, do we have a second?
Second.
I'll have to look around. Mr. Apple. Y'all got me all out of kilter. Everybody's not sitting where they're supposed to be. Any discussion? If not, we'll vote. Hold your fair and say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Move on to our superintendent actions. That's a very short list. Hope they had a chance to look at it. Now we'll go to new business. New business A. This is policy suspensions due to COVID-19. Do we have a motion on new business A?
So moved.
Mr. Apple, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Apple, who's second? And Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Any discussion? If not, we'll vote. Hold your fair and say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. New business B. This is a partnership agreement between the LBJ and C Head Start, Smith County Board of Education. Do we have a motion on new business B?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Manning, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Apple. Any discussion? If not, this is, uh, doesn't involve money, we'll roll call. Mr. Manning?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes. New business C. This is a special education contract school year 2021. Do we have a motion on new business C?
So moved.
Mr. Shoulders, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Manning, any discussion?
What would happen here, Brian, if we don't have school next year, a couple of months? How does that contract, does it just, does it pay automatically out on their services?
I think these are per meeting, per service, aren't they?
They are per service.
So, I mean, you would-
Per service, yes.
You'd have to have this, have a meeting for them to pay you out. Any other questions? If not, we'll roll call. Mr. Manning?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes. New business D. It's an annual online policy maintenance agreement. Do we have a motion on new business D?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Manning, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Apple, any discussion? If not, we'll roll call. Mr. Manning?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes. Motion passes. New business E. This is a purchase request for a shop truck from the Transportation Department. Do we have a motion on new business E?
So moved.
Mr. Shoulders, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Manning, any discussion? If not-
I want to ask Mr. Smith about that deal there. I mean, the old truck wore out.
Yeah, it's a, it's an old ninety-something forward, it's one they go out. It's, it needs to be small enough to get down the road. You know, we don't like a service truck, but it needs to be big enough, like a, what we like is a single ton with a winch. I think it's getting about 300,000 miles on it on gas, so it's getting a lot of miles. They, they run a lot of bit, about every day, checking, you know, the bus goes down or something. And they're not talking about buying a new one, they're just trying to buy one that's a, a good price, mid-range truck, you know, four or five.
So when, whenever the truck is purchased, who would have to look at it and say, yeah, this is-
Well, mechanics and her, and it has to fall within a certain, like, you have to be close to the NADA, you know, probably couldn't buy one at $10,000 over the 15,000 or a truck for 25. It's got to fall within reasonable expectations of what your Kelly Blue Book is.
Yeah.
And then they were your look at, and they probably asked me to come and look at it, and anybody else that wanted to see it, it's, you know.
Yeah.
We usually run a a, and hopefully get several to choose from, but sometimes it don't work that way, because we're too cheap. I mean, to be honest with you, it's hard to find what we're looking for.
Okay. So it just could take a couple of months finding something there, right?
Yeah, she's, she's actually, even though we've not given permission, she's been looking to see if she found it. She's not even found anything that she'd find at this point. She's looked for three months. That's why she asked me to put it on here. If she actually did find something, can she look for it pretty quick, because they're going to need it when we get drunk like that.
Okay.
We're just afraid the one we got is not very reliable right now. It's getting, all that, you know.
Any other questions? If not, we'll roll call. Mr. Manning?
Yes.
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 Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes. New business F. This is a textbook adoption, K-12, ELA, and CTE. Do we have a motion on new business F?
So moved.
Mr. Apple, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Shoulders. Any discussion? If not, we'll vote. Hold your fair and say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. New business G. Got to get two new businesses. This is a differentiated pay plan, school year 2021. Do we have a motion on new business G?
Make a motion.
Mr. Manning, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Shoulders, any discussion?
What is, what is that, what is that historic term, differentiating? What does that mean?
This is your-
Our director.
I'm more than just normal to describe it, but the state gives us, we've got to spend X amount of money in certain ways, so there's different ways we can do that, either in bonus situations. We went by the same one basically that we went by last year. It's, it's on the scale. Teacher's got to have been a good teacher better than 95% of the time, and it's based on a level. You know, we got X amount of dollars we have to put in those line items to spend. Normally, you want to add to it, I mean-
You said it perfectly. I mean, it's a big payday. We have to come up with some kind of differentiated pay. And this is what we use for years because it's based on performance. LLE is level effectiveness, how well the teachers do in the classrooms. We try to reward them, you know, the higher they make, the more we try. It's, it's not a large amount, but it is, I take it.
It's enough to say thank you, I mean it.
So we got our own guidelines, the state gives us the guidelines?
We have our own guidelines.
Okay.
But she has to also send that in and get a pre-approval from the state. She can't, we can't just make it up. We have to, we have to send it in, they have to okay it.
Any other discussion? Not, we'll roll call. Mr. Manning?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes. Motion passes. New business H. This is the fiscal year '21 federal consolidated application for IDEAESSA. Do we have a motion on new business H?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Manning, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Apple, any discussion? If not, we'll roll call. Mr. Manning?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes. Motion passes. New business I. This is line item amendments, revisions, fiscal year '20, general purpose. Do we have a motion on new business I?
So moved.
Mr. Shoulders, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Manning, any discussion? If no discussion, we'll roll call. Mr. Manning?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes. Motion passes. New business J. Line item revenue amendment revision, fiscal year '20, general purpose. Do we have a motion on new business J?
So moved.
Mr. Apple, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Shoulders, any discussion? If not, we'll roll call. Mr. Manning?
Yes.
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 Yes. Sorry, guys, I'm having trouble being that up.
That's okay. Yes. Motion passes. New business K. Liability accounts cleanup per comptroller's office. Do we have a motion on new business K?
I'm trying to come in here-
Yes, ma'am.
Um, in trying to get everything ready for the board, the check on the 142 side, I had said would be about $16,000. But since I've gotten to work on it, it's going to be more like $5,500 that's written to the 141 side. So in the third paragraph, where it says the approximate amount of $16,000 out of the cash account, I looked at balances instead of ghost numbers. My fault. So it should be 5,500 closer to that amount to please the auditor. Gina, she said you could correct that in the board minutes.
So are you saying the total's 5,500, or it's 16,000 minus 5,500?
So from the 142 side, there'll be a $5,500 check written, and then on the general purpose side, the estimate I haven't gotten to work on yet, yet, is still around 60,000.
Okay.
You know, that's the two amounts.
Okay.
It's going to be a lot harder to work on.
Okay. So do we have a motion on new-
So moved.
And this is with the amendment?
We still, we still on with one?
With the amendment.
New business K.
Okay.
So we have a motion with the amendment of 5,500? Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Apple, any more discussion?
The first one, Manning?
Yes, Mr. Manning, I'm sorry. If there's no more discussion, we'll roll call. Mr. Manning?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Motion passes. New business L. This is the SRO invoice, school year 2019, 2020. This is actually, uh, the amount to be paid for the third and fourth quarters. I think the third quarter invoice is attached. Do we have a motion on new business L?
I'll make it.
Mr. Manning? Do we have a second? I'll second it. Mr. Smith?
Discussion?
Discussion.
How's our quarters broke down here?
I think, I think, I think there's some, I think there's two questions being asked here that's kind of confusing to the board, uh, because I've talked to some of you. One is the, is the invoice from the third quarter. That, that's what this is, okay? And we were invoiced the correct number this time at 60,000, I think. And I'm just being, I think the question of some board community is, did they work for the school system? No, they didn't. I mean, you know, whether or not they were called in, they, I think they worked, but that's, but one way I look at it, we paid everybody else under, you're both side. I think the other part of the question is that, where it's too bold, is that some of us that sit in that meeting is that they're, you know, on scale to go about what they went over budget again last year. And I think we need to understand what we're voting for right here. Now is the $60,000 quarterly bill.
When did that quarter end?
The first quarter is July, August, September, and then October, November, December, second quarter, and then January, February, March, the third quarter, and then April, May, and June will be the last quarter.
That's the fourth quarter.
That's the reason I'm asking. Yeah. This is actually- I think we need to, personally, I think we need to pay the third quarter because they basically worked the third. I don't, I don't think the third quarter is off. I mean, or it ought to be, but I think there's some confusion with the overlap, what people, I think we're asking two different things.
Are we, the, the motion is to pay the-
Third quarter.
I think it needs to be clear, this is for the third quarter.
Yes, it's fourth quarter.
So just the third quarter?
This is the third quarter bill, correct?
This is third quarter. What do I do about the fourth quarter?
Yeah. But, but tonight is about the third quarter.
I think you're going to have to bring it back to the fourth quarter.
The fourth shouldn't have been invoiced yet.
Yeah, my letter says third and fourth. I mean, because the bill won't come until after the end of the fiscal year.
The one I have on my desk, though, is for the correct seat down there, for the third quarter.
For the third quarter. But we won't get the bill for the fourth quarter probably until sometime in August. I've got to set up a payable for-
If the board wants to do, to ask us not to pay that, till we discuss that again in the fourth quarter, you know, when that comes in, we can do that. But, but I think you need to understand, this is for the third-
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
And I, I apologize, I don't, I don't know if y'all can hear me or not, this is kind of new for me. But if I'm understanding right, I, I have, I have two remarks. If I'm understanding right, the, uh, the third quarter bill that we're looking at right now is what is within our budget and our expectations. Is that correct?
And it would be for January, February, and March, and that's correct on it. That would have been-
That's correct.
Yes.
Before the, the COVID did, so, probably, so.
Okay. So my, I guess my second, my, my second part of that, it, it does say third and fourth quarter invoices, but since we're voting on the, the third, and, and I see Ms. Mitchell is nodding at me back there, if it's, if we're correct on the third quarter and it's what it should be, I'm okay with that. But if, if we, if the next one is not what it should be, then I'm, I'm going, same for my part, I think we need to have discussion before we pay anything else.
And I think we can do that. I think we can bring the fourth one back and discuss it then and break it down.
Well, we won't get it until after the fiscal year. I've got to set up a payable, but by June 30th, there has to be a payable set up for the SRO bill. I've got to know by June 30th what you're going to pay in August.
We could ask them, we could ask them to have us invoice by then, and we can bring it up next week.
Mr. Chairman, I don't think you can ask the board about what's up, I haven't seen.
Yeah.
You can't ask them about it on an invoice that I haven't seen. But I'm sure Ms. Mitchell-
Yeah, they've sent us, they, they've spent kind of a credit third-
So I'll just estimate the payable and then come back and, okay.
So we're voting, just to be clear, we're voting on the third quarter, right?
Third quarter.
I, I have no problem with the third quarter. The fourth quarter, we might need to talk about somewhere. Third quarter is basically all the way up, they worked. And that's my, I kind of like to talk about it.
I agree. I agree with Mr. Manning on that 100%. I agree with you 100%. We need to look at that fourth quarter when it comes in.
Well, Stacy's already contacted me from the mayor's office and asked what you all would like, because she's not going to have time sheets.
What I like, is they're on.
So, okay. So-
You asked.
So just send us whatever documentation they have at that time.
If, if they want it at school, which we want it at school, matter of fact, we're going to pay them for probably two weeks right now, but they weren't even there. And so now you're talking about April, May, and June. Guys, I don't know about y'all, but me being, it's going to April, May, and June, no. So if you want, if- And there would be some-
There's going to be an argument with this.
And Mr. Manning, there would be some, you know, there'd be some graduations and stuff, you know, some things. If it was legitimate on something, but I mean- You're just asking what they got. I, I don't know.
There, there's going to be, there's going to be an argument, being we've paid it, we paid, we paid everybody else for the time they weren't here. This was in our budget to pay it for that fourth quarter.
We'll have to discuss that.
Right. I mean, that'd be a discussion, I guess, in June.
They're paying our employees.
Yeah.
That's true.
They're, they're not hiring employees.
They're not hiring.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If, if I could, sir, again, just kind of, my position, my position, you know, I, I don't have a problem with this third quarter. It's, it's within budget and it's within expectations. And I understand what you're saying and what everybody else is saying when it comes to the fourth quarter. The only thing I can say for my part, you know, I, I know we'll probably need to have some discussion on that and everything, but just for my part, just to say it and get it out of the way, I'm not going to vote for anything that exceeds, anything that has been posted. I, I think we need to live with that, but, and, you know, and there may be discussion. And I understand what, uh, Mr. Manning is saying, and I'm, I'm open to discussion about all that. However, uh, you know, I'm, I'm not going to vote for anything that exceeds what we have posted. And, and it may be open for debate about, uh, the number of hours worked or whatever. I'm okay with, but debating that, it's just everybody's side, because everybody has a, has their point of view, and there's things I'm sure I haven't considered, and this, that, and the other. But, you know, for right now, the third quarter, I'm okay with. But, but just so everybody knows kind of where I am, regardless of what the fourth quarter is, I'm, I'm not going to vote for anything that exceeds our budget. Uh, we, we live within our means and we do a good job, and with that, to provide for our children, our employees, and I'm, I'm not going to vote for anything that exceeds the budget.
Ten-four. All right, so we know thi- this votes for the third quarter, though. We'll get, we'll bring the fourth quarter up later when we see their number. Third quarter, we have a motion, we have a second. Any other discussion? All right, we'll roll call. Mr. Manning?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
But this, Mr. Chairman, other part, wouldn't they kind of already known kind of sort of what we might possibly could own right now and have that by the next board meeting?
We, well, we ran in basically the same thing last year. I mean, we all know where we're at in budget. I think, only, that's kind of hit eight or 10,000 over right now, roughly.
We haven't paid anything over.
Oh, we haven't?
We've paid 120.
Yeah, that's-
We've just been spending straight 60. I saw the number, somebody gave me the, but-
That's a straight 60 we've paid this year.
Each, each, each quarter, yeah.
Each quarter we've paid 60 this year.
But I think your question is what happened last year, and, and that, I guess that mixes up with the meeting that we had, but, uh, one time they felt like it was going to be about that amount out again. I think that's the third part here that's, Mr. Lewis brought up.
But we just need to-
Tonight's just the-
Yeah, they just need to have us an invoice by our next board meeting.
Of course, it runs through June 30th. The quarter four bill runs through June 30th.
I think they'll have to invoice us for the higher-
So go ahead and ask for an invoice, Mr. Winkler? For the, okay.
Say what it looks like.
Okay. Let's move on to new business M. This is the line item COVID-19 amendment revisions for fiscal year '20, general purpose. Do we have a motion on new business M?
I'll make that motion based on the request from Ms. Mitchell.
Mr. Lewis, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Manning? Any discussion? If not, we'll roll call. Mr. Manning?
Yes.
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 Ms. Moore?
Yes, sorry.
It's all right. Yes.
I'm paying attention, I just can't hit the button.
That's all right. New business N. This is the approval of the FY '21 budget. New business N. This is the approval of the FY twenty-one budget. Do we have a motion on new business N?
I'll, and I'll second it. And I also like to thank Mr. Smith, Ms. Mitchell, for the excellent job they done, uh, giving this to the, uh, budget finance committee for the, the number.
I apologize. I had to work. I was intended on being there, but I had to work. I apologize. Mr. Lewis with a motion, Mr. Manning with a second. Any other discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Director, and, and probably, uh, Ms. Mitchell, I, I do have a question. I'll try to be brief. Uh, I know last year, uh, when we were working on the budget, we were talking about raises. And, and we were able to do pay raises for our, uh, our teachers and administrators and our, our professionals and custodians and all that. Uh, we weren't able to get far enough in for where we were actually able to do anything with respect to our cafeteria staff and all of that. Uh, Mr. Director, can you, can you kind of update us on what we're looking at this year? Are we going to be able to do anything? Or maybe, Ms. Mitchell, are we gonna be able to do anything this year for those individuals like we tried to do last year and just weren't able to?
Yes, I, I knew they were working on it. Now, when I talked to you, said I'm back earlier and I didn't have the, I wanted to make sure I gave you the right information. They have in the meet, they've done a study, Mr. Lewis, that, that made them comparable with everybody around us. They kind of restructured the whole pay scale so that it helps the first year versus up to thirty, thirty-five years, so it's, but it adds up to about a half dollar an hour raise. I talked to her just before we come in here, so it, it'll be a, if I understood correctly, and I don't wanna give the wrong numbers, but she thought it would equate out roughly about a dollar an hour, which is a pretty nice raise, and they deserved it and hard to find good people. But I know some, the board's fought hard to try to, to keep them on a, on a good pace with people around us. They did a study and that's what it come back and, and as you know, they kind of operate independently, a little different than the rest of the budget under our umbrella. But, but I did check with her just about thirty to forty-five minutes ago when that's, that's the number she gave.
Mr. Director, I, I appreciate your input on that. And, and Ms. Mitchell, thank you so much for your diligence on that as well as everything else you do for us. My, my only reason for the question was, you know, last year we strive really hard to, uh, to do things for all the employees. And, and I think that the board as a whole typically, you know, generally would want to. However, that, that classification just didn't, didn't make it and, and, and they're, they're important. They do a good job and they, they take care of our children, our staff, and all those things. And, and I, I just pride themselves because I, you know, I wanted everybody to know that they had not been forgotten. And, uh, you know, we, that's been twelve months ago, but they've not been forgotten. And I, I appreciate the, the raise that y'all are looking at for them. Thank you so much for your diligence and your work on that.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Thank y'all also for, for working on this budget. All right, uh, we have a motion and a second. We'll roll call Mr. Manning.
Yes.
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 Yes, motion passes. All right, let's move to our discussion items. Discussion A is our athletic trainer agreement proposal from Star Physical Therapy. I'll let Mr. Smith take over.
As we know, we're, we're without an athletic training group right now. Uh, we've been contacted by a couple of their groups. This group came, saw her, met with us the other day, had a very productive meeting. I felt like it'd been, uh, Mr. Apple, happy to be close by, and he came over and, and listened. They've communicated with us very well. I, I think they've got a, a very realistic, a very good, uh, proposal for us. Uh, uh, I know that Mr. Apple, Mr. Lewis was on, who else was on that, that committee last year? Just you two?
No, I was on.
Mr. Manning.
I, I, I do think it would be good because I think it's always good for everybody to hear the same thing, uh, so that I didn't misunderstand anything. But from everything I've gathered, I, I like what you done. I've got a coaching background and that, that I think, Mr. Director, it helps me a lot. But, and you guys have got a tremendous reputation in front of you where I checked. I want you to know that it's disturbing that across the state lines, everybody's got nothing to get things to say about you guys. Uh, I, I do think we're very fortunate to have a clinic, whoever it is, close. Uh, uh, you know, we are hopefully getting ready to crank our athletics back up, uh, next week to some degree. Uh, whatever we do decide, I think we need to have some kind of, uh, provision or clause, like I talked to you guys about, so that we can, you know, start a physical day like that we talked to y'all about, get our kids physical, to go by board policy. If that, who we go with, then I think we need to, to get something in place so we can protect our kids pretty quick, you know. Fifteen to twenty years ago, it's kind of like SRO, we didn't think we needed them, and now we don't know how we do without them, and I.
Where would you say, where would you say they're from, Director? Where'd you say?
This is actually Star that's building the new facilities out by the car wash.
Okay.
Oh, I'm going.
I'll let them, uh, give the presentation.
Can you, me just get my history?
And then, and then I think you've been in business, I'm not gonna, you, you tell it about with me, but twenty-something years, started out in Georgia, Alabama, area.
No, Middle Tennessee.
Mr. N, that area. So I talked to some people, I think, in that area. But, uh, but they'll give you, they'll, they, I'm gonna turn it over to them when, when it's time. But, but I do think we need to look, would it, whoever it be, and we need to get it going and build a good working relationship and protect our kids because this thing picks and crank up and we want to be, be in front of it. We want to be within board policy and the insurance and all that by having our physicals and all that too. So, did anybody get any more questions from me before I turn it over to them? Mr. Smith, you good?
I, I've got one, sir.
All right.
Uh, and I may be jumping the gun just a little bit, but I, I, as I recall, and you correct me, Mr. Director, if I'm wrong, I, I think the last time that we were in this position, the, uh, the committee met with them, the, the last ones on the proposal, just super quick, uh, following the board meeting and met with them and had a discussion about and all that and brought a, a proposal back. Is, is that what we're talking about doing this time? And I'd like to be consistent, I guess, if I'm trying to say, I know time is not necessarily on our side, but, you know, uh, I'd like for us to be consistent. That's sort of what we did the last time. And, and, you know, I, I guess my question is, or my hope would be that we're gonna make that same thing happen again this time?
I, I think what you're asking, Mr. Lewis, and correct me if I'm wrong, but you're, I, I think they've got a proposal tonight for us. And, and the way I read it, I think it's a very good, very realistic proposal. But I do think it's good for the committee to meet and that what they've got any questions. Uh, and then the only thing I would ask the board and the, and legal advice on, you know, if, if we, if we don't make a decision and that the committee meets and hey, we're sold on Star or whoever, and that's who we go with, that we can make some kind of provision and not have to wait till the next board meeting to implement it. I do think it would be good for the committee to meet because they have some good questions I think to ask to that make sure we're on the same page. But give somebody permission to make that call so that we go ahead and get it placed for a student body.
Mr. Director, I don't.
Mr. Winkler, present, see you.
Yes.
To address that.
Yes, sir. I don't, just kind of going back to the impulse, I don't think you can ask the board to vote on a contract they've not seen yet. And we have to do that. Now, this is a special service, much like an attorney or engineer or architect. And if there's some temporary services and the vendor's willing to do that, um, and give the director authority to do that temporarily, uh, probably go that direction. But I don't think you can vote on the proposal overall tonight, uh, simply because you've not seen a term and you don't have one before you can vote on it.
Just some type of bridge or coverage that we can do though until we can get back to the board meeting would be, like I tell you.
They could give you authority to temporarily engage some services. They just, you just can't sign a contract. If they're willing to do it, you're willing to do it if you did that.
Okay. So before, what before? Well, you all go ahead and, and do your presentation, then we'll, we'll discuss that after the, we, we won't hold y'all up.
Well, thank you, and, and thank you for the kind words as, as well. And we don't have a, a formal presentation necessarily. I just wanted to come introduce ourselves. My name's Kelly Ziegler. I'm a partner with Star Physical Therapy. Um, we've been around since nineteen ninety-seven based out of Middle Tennessee. Um, STAR stands for Spine Therapy, Notic Rehabilitation, and Acrimony. Um, we cover, well, we have about seventy clinics throughout the state of Tennessee right now. Um, we just opened one in Gordonsville, um, which is one of the reasons why we're here. Um, we cover approximately fifty, a little over fifty high schools throughout the state of Tennessee, all the way from Rome County to Lake County. Um, since we started, community involvement is very important to us. We talked about partnering and partnering with schools and school systems is very important to be a part of the community. Um, and, and that's what we're all about. That's what we've done. Um, we have been with some school systems since our inception in nineteen ninety-seven. So, a lot of other folks, it's kind of fly by night. They look at the numbers and they look at, at if it's making them money. We don't. We, we look at truly partnering and truly doing what's best for the student athletes, for the kids of the community. Um, let me introduce who I've got here with me. Brooke McCall. Um, I apologize if any of y'all remember her from her time at Gordonsville High School. If she said or did anything, um, that, that may not have been good. Um, she broke hall at the time. But Brooke is our clinic director, um, in our new Gordonsville clinic. We don't put dots on maps. We don't say we have to be in Gordonsville or Carthage or, or any town. We find people. And we want the people who are from the community, who care about the community to open up. We would not have opened up a Gordonsville clinic or a clinic in Smith County if we didn't have Brooke or somebody like Brooke. So that's the reason we're here, and again, that's why we want to partner. We also have Lee Rice. Um, Lee is one of our athletic training coordinators. Um, Lee is over in Cookeville. He covers this region of the state for us. Um, he's, he's over Putnam County and some other areas. Um, I guess more on the Cumberland, Cumberland Plateau and on the, on the eastern side of Nashville. So, um, that's who we are. We've talked about some things and, and, and I'll be glad to come back and talk to any committee, talk to anybody individually that, that wants to talk. But again, we just wanted to introduce ourselves. And I'll, I'll let, I'll let both of them kind of stand up and give, give a little, little history and information on themselves. Brooke.
Hi, I'm Brooke. Um, I was Brooke Hall whenever you guys probably remember me. Um, and we just opened two weeks ago and it's been really great to be back at home. Um, met some people that know my family a little bit more than me, but it's good to, to be here and be working with people that I feel like I know and I feel like knew me whenever I was growing up. Um, I feel really strongly about getting involved with the school systems because I have family that go to school here and I have friends that are having kids now and they're gonna be going to school there. So it makes me feel comfortable to know that we're all gonna be taking care of each other.
Uh, good evening, everyone. Um, first of all, I want to thank each and every one of you for giving us the opportunity, uh, to come here and, and speak with you guys and, and present, uh, ourselves to you. Um, I, I myself have, have been working with Star for about ten years. Um, and, and throughout that time period, uh, working as an athletic trainer in the high school setting and working as a regional sports medicine coordinator, um, I, I've, I've seen personally, um, the, the value that Star places on developing relationships with the community and, and really backing the athletic trainers, uh, that they, that they employ and that they, uh, they partner with, uh, with respect to the school systems. And, and we're excited, uh, for that opportunity to do that here in Smith County as well. Um, like Zig has said, like Brooke has said, uh, we're, we're big on, uh, enveloping ourselves within the community, not vice versa. Uh, we, we want to be as much a part of you guys, um, and, and we take pride in doing that in each and every one of the communities that we serve. And, and we're eager and excited to do the same thing here with you guys. So, so thank you once again for the opportunity.
Have we got any questions right off hand that anybody wants to ask? Of course, I, I agree, we probably need to do our committee, let them ask questions, maybe if you can sit down, sounds like, pretty quickly. I don't know what our committee's schedule looks like.
Is there anybody interested behind?
Yes, sir, yeah. I mean.
My schedule will be tight, guys. Coke and that thing, or we go, we can't leave.
Yeah.
Start at two o'clock. Friday afternoons. Twelve o'clock or something.
Scotty, what about you when you're about?
Mr. Director?
Yes, sir.
I mean, I, I could, I mean, I, I'm, it's hard for me to hear some of the conversation around the break, and I apologize. Uh, I could as soon as, uh, you know, anytime, uh, let's see, probably, uh, Thursday, uh, you know, before noon or around noon.
Are you available on Friday afternoons?
Uh, I am not on Friday afternoon. Uh, what, what time do you mean Friday afternoon?
Time.
Either, it ha- it'd have to be somewhere around twelve o'clock or later.
Twelve or later.
He said twelve or later.
Uh, I, I could be Friday afternoon about one. I mean, for my part of it, the questions I have, it'd probably take thirty minutes, you know.
What, how do you guys schedule?
I can go Friday.
Very flexible.
We got Friday.
David, you.
I can go eight Friday. I'll be back about, I'll be back five, bro. I can do Friday.
You'll do Friday morning?
Yeah.
Friday morning.
Are y'all good Friday morning?
Yes, sir.
Where do you all want to meet? Here? Is here fine with you all?
Right here, sir.
Okay. That'll be a good opportunity for them to ask.
Mr. Scotty, here at one o'clock Friday, would that be good?
That's fine.
Okay. Everybody's good with that? We'll meet, have our committee meet it, meet you up one o'clock here.
Any other board members?
Yes, and any, any other that can be here.
This Friday, Tom.
This Friday at one o'clock.
Twenty second.
Thank you all.
Y'all need us, I don't wanna be disrespectful, but I mean.
No, you, you all got, you know, you go ahead. Y'all need to go ahead.
That's my question.
Yeah, if you, if you all need to go ahead now, you can go ahead. We'll finish up all this fun that we're having.
All right.
Well, y'all, thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
We'll see you guys Friday and Friday.
Thank you all.
I think y'all can, we'll say Friday at one o'clock.
Yes, sir.
Great, thank you.
All right.
Mr. Chairman and Mr. Winkler, will we have to make a motion to let the director enter into a temporary agreement?
We can't make a motion.
I don't think we can make a motion on that. Obviously, the director, if he needs to fill and the services willing to do that, they just have, have to understand there's no commitment to it, uh, at this point. And once the contract's signed, that's fine. But if he, if he's got a need, I think you could.
Would, would we be in?
Give him the authority to let them do the physicals and, um, until a formal contract's signed, just can't probably pay them or they have to understand there's no commitment to it. But if they're willing to do the service.
Would there be any liability, Jamie, if they entered into that? And I feel like they would do that, talk to them, but I don't know that, I mean.
Any liability issues would fall under your already existing insurance policies. If the risk is really on plan because they live by the service, they, they're ready to make a contract.
It's just that we start these up. They had talked to us that day like they'd go in and get a, a, a physical day lined up immediately. And that really helps our schools because they can have one day and forget the doctors and everybody on board working together, coaches. When he scheduled, get everybody pretty much in and out today, and it keeps us in the policy, but it really helps make sure kids are, are getting that physical and that cost for me that.
They'll be subject to, they'll have their own liability coverage as well. They're willing to do it. That's the problem with the director alone.
If everybody's good with that, I'm, I'm fine. After y'all meet them and if it's.
So what, tell us what we're back, we're gonna exactly vote on it Friday night?
We won't be vote, we can't vote on anything.
No, that's not.
It's, this is a service. We really don't have to vote on a service. I mean, we can.
So we're not. Well, they'll.
Well, we will with a contract, but we don't have to.
Forward with a contract, but it'll have money attached to it for.
Okay.
And, uh, so you'll have to vote on that, but up until then, if they're willing to provide some services under the, with the understanding that no money's been allotted or allocated under the understanding that no contract's been signed, but if they're willing to do it, there's certainly no problem with the life.
We will eventually vote, yeah, we will eventually vote on a contract, but it'll.
Hopefully next.
Yeah, hopefully next board meeting if that's suits the committee, if they suit the committee. Any other discussion about that? If not, we'll move on to discussion B. That's the evaluation of director schools. This is our yearly evaluation. Ms. Morris has copies up here. If you do not have a copy, extras, uh, evaluation copies, you're, okay. I know I've got a couple of y'all's already.
Did you give mine?
I haven't looked yet, so I probably do. I probably got it. I, I haven't looked today. Um, if you haven't though, I need to get these back. It would help if I can get them before June the first. If not, at least a week before the next board meeting at the latest. So if you haven't got them to me, just try to get them to me. And we got extras up here if you need them.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Uh, you know, under the circumstances, of course, we're all kind of scattered and this, that, and the other. If I, and Gina may answer, but if I, I mean, I could buy complete mine and, and just, uh, drop it off up there in Scuba World in an envelope with your name on it or something. Is that okay?
That is, that is fine with me if it's.
Fine with me.
Yeah, she can just tell me when she gets it and stick it in the mailbox out here and whenever I can get back and grab it or.
Yes.
We'll, we'll make that work. If you need to drop them off here.
All right, thank you very much.
Mm-hmm.
Is this something we filled out last year?
Yes.
Yes, yes. All right, we will move on to our annual policy review for April. Any questions about that, changes, et cetera? If not, I believe we needed to have a quick executive session. So we have a motion.
Don't move.
Mr. Manning, do we have a second? Uh, Mr. Shoulders, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.